Thank you so much, Chair. I want to start off by thanking our Chancellor for her opening remarks yesterday and acknowledging the uncertain environment that we're in and that many of our stakeholders and immigrant community are living in a very real fear. And many have gone back into the shadows. I want to take this time to appreciate many have gone back into the shadows. I want to take this time to appreciate all of those in our system who are allies and have supported our students during this most difficult time. I also want to restate my sincere gratitude to all those that have advocated at the federal level, at the state level, to ensure, especially at the state level, that that 8% proposal cut be reduced to 30%. It truly is, all of those voices, the reason why it wasn't as drastic as it could be. And trustees, I ask that you keep your advocacy hat on because this is year-round advocacy now. We're going to have to continue to do some heavy work at the federal level and also at the state level. So with that, will the Committee on Governmental Relations please come to order? And before we begin the work of the committee, I want to share that we are committed to giving an update on tribal relations and NAGPRA and Cal-NAGPRA compliance at each board meeting. For this board meeting, we have prepared a written report that is included in the agenda packet. Please make sure that if you have any questions that you connect with the governmental relations team on your questions or let me know. Is now time for the committee to consider today's consent agenda? Would any committee member wish to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Okay. May I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any opposed or abstentions? The items on the consent agenda are approved. The committee has two items on today's discussion agenda. Item two is a state legislative update. The information item will be presented by VC Greg Sacks and AVC Nathan Dietrich. Take it away.
Sounds great. Thank you so much, Trustee Rodriguez. Very much appreciate it. So at this point in time, the legislature is more than halfway through their session, which will end on September 12th. As you can see in the agenda packet and previously distributed mid-year report, which included costs, the ASR team and our colleagues from across the system continue to work hard to CSU in order to secure a favorable outcome on the many bills making their way through the legislature. In addition to the legislative efforts, ASR continues to find creative ways to engage the capital community while partnering with campuses and other stakeholders, all of which Assistant Vice Chancellor Nathan Dietrich will discuss in just a second. He will highlight the key bills that the team is working on and also provide a look ahead on what we should expect through the rest of the session. And so with that, Nathan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Sacks, for that introduction. When the board met in May, it was immediately prior to one of the key legislative milestones of the year in which bills are reviewed for their fiscal impact and a number are typically held in a House appropriations committee, meaning they do not continue to move forward in the legislative process. Now that we have passed that milestone, I'd like to start by sharing with you an update on some of the bills that are no longer making their way through the legislature this year. This includes AB 1082, which would have allowed out-of-state nursing schools to earn their students, to earn their clinical hours in California. If passed, it would have placed additional stresses on an already constrained system of limited clinical spots that many CSU students already have challenges getting access to. SB 60 and AB 556 propose new categories for student fee waivers. We appreciate both authors' intentions, but without any identified funding, these bills would have forced the CSU to absorb the financial cost, threatening the stability of programs that serve all of our students. AB 850 would have restricted how CSU universities can collect institutional debts owed by students. This bill would have tied our hands operationally and left funds unrecovered, funds that would otherwise support student services and our academic operations. AB 326 and AB 530 would have layered on new AB 958, and our final bill, AB 958, would have proposed to expand the Board of Trustees by adding two additional members. As reported to you in the mid-year report, we estimate that more than $45 million of new annual costs have been avoided with the bills that are no longer advancing this year's. In this, in each case, the ASR legislative team engaged the legislature and we communicated the impact not just in dollars, but in the consequences to student learning, campus operations, and system efficiencies. And we appreciate that our lawmakers listened. Several bills are still moving through the legislature that could significantly impact the CSU. Some with promise, others with cause for concern. I'd like to highlight a few key proposals and what they can mean for our system. First, there remains momentum around the creation of a new statewide education and workforce coordinating entity as the final state budget included $1.5 million for this effort. The current proposals do not remove any of the CSU or Board of Trustees authority. And we want to ensure that the new entity, that any new entity builds on the existing strengths of the CSU and our educational partners. Second, SB 640. It proposes to codify a direct admissions pathway into the CSU for eligible high school graduates. The bill builds upon our Riverside County direct admissions pilot and aligns with the goals of equity and access and could help a number of our universities increase enrollment by making the pathway easier for eligible students. Third, AB 977 aligns with the CSU's new system-wide NAGPRA policy and could help facilitate the rebury of Native American ancestors if appropriate on CSU-owned property after the repatriation process is completed and in consultation with tribes. And next, as previously discussed at many board meetings, AB 1400 seeks to expand the authority of community colleges to offer a Bachelor of Science and Nursing degree. While addressing the state's nursing challenges, they share priority for many of us. This pre significant concerns about program duplication. And we are pleased that the Association of Independent California Colleges and Universities, the University of California, and the California Faculty Association continue to join us in opposition to the bill. While our universities are working proactively to develop additional and improved partnerships with community colleges, these partnerships lead to greater number of nurses entering the workforce and simply allowing community colleges to offer BSNs. This includes Channel Islands, which recently announced a new BSN partnership with Allen Hancock College. Thank you for your leadership there. In Sacramento, momentum has increased somewhat on a housing bond as it was left off the ballot last year and the issue remains the top priority for many voters. We and the UC are working with the bonds proponents to include student housing at our universities in the bond. As you know, we have more than 12,000 beds that are planned to be built across the CSU. Funding from the state would allow these beds to be priced affordably and the construction of new student housing would relieve housing pressures in the cities and communities that our universities are in. We also continue to work to build momentum for a higher education facilities bond with Assemblymember David Alvarez. And no decision has been made on any bond this year for the 2026 ballot and we expect negotiations to heat up later this fall and into the winter. While budget and legislative advocacy have taken up a considerable amount of our bandwidth this session, I do want to let you know that the Chancellor's Office continues to find creative ways to engage the capital community. In June, on National Day, in partnership with Systemwide Advancement, we held an alumni gathering on the west steps of the state Capitol. This year, we were pleased to include five system-wide research affinity groups: Coast, CSU Water, the Agricultural Research Institute, CSU Adapt, and CSU Biotech, who all shared information about the value of their research with attendees. And about 100 attendees from the state Capitol community came out to the event. We have also hosted three legislative briefings on topics of great interest in recent weeks. At our last meeting, I shared with you that we held a nursing and healthcare workforce briefing in May. In June, Assistant Vice Chancellor April Gromo from the Chancellor's Office was joined by President Neufeld and President Perez to review many of the ways the system and our universities are working with innovation and intention to increase enrollment. The presidents shared success stories at Chico State and San Marcos as both campuses have moved boldly to increase enrollment. The Chancellor's Office shared how direct admissions, dual enrollment, the transfer success pathway, and initiatives of high school and K-12 districts are all being used to increase enrollment and accessibility. Earlier this month, Chief Information Officer Ed Clark was joined by faculty and staff and leaders from San Diego State and San Jose State to review how the Chancellor's Office is supporting faculty who are proactively incorporating AI in the teaching and learning to ensure students graduate workforce-ready. The presentation was very similar to the presentation you heard yesterday. Issues such as the ethical use of AI, ensuring critical thinking, and micro credentials were discussed. Both briefings were attended by dozens of legislative staff and will continue to hold more of these briefings on important topics as we go forward. In addition to the legislative work in Sacramento, I want to highlight a few statewide collaboration efforts with stakeholders and strategic partners that demonstrate our value and commitment to the communities that make up California. This includes the California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, which recently kicked off its annual statewide convention at Calpolaypamona, reinforcing our role as a valued partner in business and economic development in our state. Additionally, we are supporting two statewide youth leadership programs affiliated with the state legislature: the African-American Leaders of Tomorrow and the Juvenile Latino Youth Leadership Project. These organizations would serve hundreds of high school students by offering college preparation and leadership development. Will be hosting their residential programs this summer at Dominguez Hills, Fresno State, Cal State LA, and Sacramento State. Together, these efforts represent strategic collaborations that foster college readiness and community engagement and engage policymakers in our state. So beforehand, I want to have a final reminder of where we are in the legislative process. We are currently in the first week of the legislature's summer recess. The Assembly and Senate will reconvene on August 18th and the session will end on September 12th. The governor will have until October 12th to sign or veto bills. And we are monitoring for any sign that a special session may be called to address the budget climate and the challenges that may arise in the federal government. The ASR office will continue to work in collaboration with our trustees, the Chancellor's Office, our university partners, and the CSU-wide stakeholders as we advance our agenda and the session continues.
Thank you, Nathan. I appreciate it. And my thanks to ASR Strategic Communications and so many others that have been involved in educating our legislators about these different pieces of legislation. While there is lots of work still to do, we are actually in a much better place than we were at this point last year as it relates to legislation. And so while this report is focused on legislative advocacy, I do want to take a quick moment to echo what we've heard from others and express a huge thank you to the collective work related to our budget advocacy. This was a year when all members of the CSU community came together and advocated in a thoughtful and systematic fashion to tell the story of the CSU. And of course, we know we will be back at it not only next year, but continuing the remainder of this year as we continue the process. Let me again close by thanking our trustees and so many others for their engagement and leadership in our state legislative advocacy efforts. And you, of course, will be informed as we finalize the session over the next few weeks. This concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions.
Thanks so much for the presentation. I see so far Trustee Lopez has a question. Anyone else? Go ahead, Trustee Lopez.
One quick question. We heard a lot about AB 437 and public comment. I just would like to know what it's about, how it affects us, what our position is. And then the second thing is a larger question about the BSN. It's been my lifelong experience that persistent ends up winning out and they have been very persistent. So I guess we continue to build coalitions and opposition and so forth, but at some point, where do you see this ending?
Thank you. I'll answer SB 437 first and then we'll talk about the BSN program. So yesterday at public comment, you heard from individuals who are opposed to SB 437. That bill was sponsored by Assemblymember Akila Weber Pearson and is supported by the California Legislative Black Caucus as one of their bill priorities this session. The CSU had adopted a support position as has the academic senate. The bill has passed the state senate and assembly committees. It now awaits a vote in the full assembly. So what the bill does, last year's state budget set aside $12 million for policies associated with the recommendations of the California Reparations Task Force. The bill that was discussed yesterday, and this would appropriate up to $6 million of that funding from last year, not this year's budget we've talked about the last two days, but last year's budget to conduct research in the furtherance of the recommendations of the task force and also explore how an individual status as a descendant of a slave person can be confirmed. So faculty would do research on how the reparations process and an individual could be acknowledged as a descendant of a slave. The CSU would not be the reviewing entity that would make decisions on any claims or any new policies by the state, simply that process. And so that's where the bill stands right now. It's set for appropriations hearing committee next year this month and then it would go to the full assembly after that. And then on BSNs. Nathan, did you want to say something? Oh, okay. Well, you're right. We have, for two years in a row now, seen these bills come forward and we are very clear where some in our state want to take the BSN program. I think the end game remains to be seen. We need to have a system-wide discussion on that and what our plan is going forward. But I can tell you the partnerships that our campuses and the system are supporting has helped alleviate some of those programs at different community college districts who have seen the value of the partnership and how when you work with the CSU campus and we work proactively and for two-plus-two and concurrent enrollment programs, we can produce more nurses faster. And that is the way I think we keep engaging on this topic because the end result should be about how the state produces more nurses. And we know that in partnership between our universities, our system, and community colleges, we can deliver more nurses faster and more efficiently to the state.
And Trustee Lopez, if I may add to what AVC Dietrich shared, you know, this is work that we are doing certainly in partnership, not just on the legislative front. There are more than 50 collaborative education programs between our CSU campuses and community colleges with ADN to BSN programs, certainly trying to elevate that as the most effective and efficient model to grow the BSN. But I also, you heard during our last board meeting, Compton College President Keith Curry talk about the importance of regional partnerships to meet our needs. And that's actually one thing we're doing within LA County. President Curry has, on behalf of the 19 community colleges in LA County, brought them together with our LA Five Basin CSU campuses to address the specific veto message that Governor Newsom included last year, which is this needs to be solved collaboratively, not just the educational institutions, but government agencies, employers. And so we have brought those folks into an LA County Nursing 2035 planning group to do what the governor asked. Now, to your comment about persistence, there are some, I believe, community college leaders and others that are just internewsomout. So I think we have to continue to elevate in all these different venues the importance of collaboration. This is a statewide community need. This is not just about individual education, individual educational institutions, and that's, I think, how we're collectively trying to pursue that.
I just want to say thank you to the president and provosts who are working for all of these presidents that have nursing programs. They are going out of their way to create partnerships at the community college and looking to work collaboratively. I know of all of them and this is something that they have taken very, very seriously because they also know that we need nurses and that in partnership, we can do all that we can. So I just want to say thank you to the presidents and your teams.
I'll maybe close that comment and then move to my next, which is that's the persistence we then need to be out there talking about because it's happening. And yet, sometimes when we hear this, it's like we're only against the legislation that's up there. But the governor's message was so clear that this is actually not a legislative fix. This is a fix that requires the work that all of you, along with your partners in the community college systems are championing. So I'm so happy to hear about that persistence. We need to get that message out so that we can continue to fight back legislation that wouldn't actually help solve the real problem. Thought one. Two, this is yet another example of where our language sometimes is going to catch us. On slide, oh, I don't know. Three? I think it's slide three. On the $45 million of costs avoided, there's another way to say this, which is that's a $45 million cut. Had those bills passed as unfunded mandates, it would have necessitated $45 million of cuts. I almost think we need to, like, I don't know if everyone understands that the unfunded mandate necessitates a cut. And so when I saw that, I was, it's a good thing, Nathan. I'm glad you named for us. It's good that these didn't move forward in ways that would have forced that. But we do need to keep driving home this point. These would be, they would necessitate cuts. So however we continue to message that, I think is critical. And then my last point, on the CSU direct admissions, I am so excited about what's happening in Riverside County. Thank you again to every one of our presidents, to the K-12 leaders who helped drive that, to everyone on our team who drove that. It's better for our campuses. It's so much better for students. Can you just give us a few more sentences on SB 640? Where is that? What would that lead to? And what might we do to get that across the finish line?
Yeah, SB 640 is introduced by Senator Christopher Cabaldin, who represents the area from West Sacramento to Sonoma and also the Maritime Academy. And the bill has two main sections. So the first part is about direct admissions. That would basically expand the current pilot across the system. So right now, we have a just Riverside, take it side with capacity. And so that's up and down the state and there's a lot of very, very stuff we're very excited about in that part of the bill. The second part of the bill deals with transfer model curriculum, which is a whole different kind of process that we're working with authors on. But the direct admission piece, we are very excited about, about what it can mean for our communities, for our students across the state, and for our campuses. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Oh, I didn't see. Yes, thank you, Chair. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on something the vice chair hit upon. The legislators who are proposing the sort of legislation that would cause the CSU to incur $45 million of unfunded mandates. I recognize that they are acting in absolute good faith, that they're trying to solve, help solve a problem. And I guess, and this is just a question, what can we do to be more effective in communicating not only those sorts of issues to the legislature, but the broader issues in terms of the CSU, our responsibility under California law, our mandate, so that we try to avoid these near collisions as much as we can in the future?
For the work we do in Sacramento, it's a near-consistent conversation about dealing both new bills coming forward that have cost requirements and operational requirements and what we're already being asked to do. And when we approach these conversations, we do so in a spirit of partnership because we do know our legislators are acting in good faith. They have a concern they want addressed. But we have to be very clear with our full legislature about the costs associated with what we're currently to do and what any new bill would. I think there's been a very productive conversations on that level this year, especially where we were with the 8% cut facing us. But I think as we go forward, it's going to have to be something we say, you know, week in and week out about everything we do. We were having a conversation yesterday about orientation and different requirements of what we have to do at every orientation for students. And the list is getting long about stuff we know we need to do from an academic and campus operations side. And then a longer list coming from required to do on the state side. So how we juggle all these every year is what we're doing, what we're talking about. And we're working with our communications team and across the CO about how we really have concrete examples of what we're doing and where the pressure points are.
You know, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to go? Do you want me? You can always go. Okay, so the only other thing that I'd mention is that, you know, I mean, every single year, there are thousands and thousands and thousands of bills that are introduced. And so it gives us a chance to be able to understand where many of our legislators are coming from and where their priorities are. So while that may seem late in the game, it also, though, does provide us an opportunity to work with them in partnership. And so that's really important. The other thing is that, one thing I've appreciated about the work that's happening now is that there's this larger education component that's taking place and how we need to make sure that our legislators fully understand who we are, what we're doing, the challenges we're addressing, the demographic that we're educating, and making sure that the workforce of California is as prepared as possible. And so we're expanding kind of our work in that regard. And Nathan alluded to a couple of different programs that are happening, but we're also building out a strategic engagement model that's going to include a lot of third-party advocates and a lot of other friends of the CSU to be able to help kind of carry that water and communicate. And then the last thing I'll mention is just the way in which our campuses have been such amazing partners and being able to communicate. And, you know, is are able to talk about the challenges that they have, bring real-life examples that are happening at that level. It makes such a huge difference because at the end of the day, our legislators care very deeply about what happens in their district. So a couple things.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Sacks. I think those are great explanations of what's happening and the communication is really important. The other thing we have to think about is what is it that we're not doing fast enough that the legislature wants to jump in? And we have to also look at that and see and kind of look at those bills and say, hey, wait a minute. We are doing this or no, and how do we educate why or why not? And if it's up to us, then we move a little faster with urgency.
So I'm glad that you went before me because you anticipated my question. And I particularly appreciate your comments, Chancellor. I'm not going to go into history, but there have literally been times when the legislature stepped in because the CSU took a word of a decade to make a decision on one thing. And so the one thing I would ask as a very firm point, could you, either in September or November, bring back a presentation in terms of that outreach and describe it so that we can, as trustees, we can understand it with specificity?
Absolutely. And the role of our trustees and the connectivity of our trustees are a big part of the success in that work. So thank you. Absolutely.
Wonderful ending comments. Thank you, Chancellor, for that really important point. Thank you so much for the team. Really appreciate it. Item three is A relations. This item will then be C Sacks and also AVC Cullen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you again, Trustee Rodriguez. So here we are. The start of the Trump administration has seen very quick executive actions largely centered around more than 170 executive orders the president has signed since coming into office. These executive orders have centered around all sorts of issues, diversity, equity, inclusion, to the elimination of research funding. As we know, many of the executive orders and other actions that are coming out of DC have created some very noteworthy challenges for all of higher education. I want to acknowledge and thank the hard work of the Chancellor's Office for the development of strategic response teams who are working diligently to understand the impact of these different actions and provide guidance to our universities. I also want to thank our presidents and our teams and their teams, excuse me, who every day are working to support our students, faculty, and staff who have been impacted by the frequent changes in funding and policy. Together with all of our CSU stakeholders, we're working to make sure our legislators and policymakers understand the impacts that come from these decisions being made in Washington and how they can support the next generation of leaders that are graduating from the CSU. I now turn the presentation over to one to provide an update on the numerous actions and activities that have taken place by this administration and Congress and how the CSU can continue to advocate on behalf of our students and our universities. And with that, please go ahead, Jeff.
Vice Chancellor Sacks. The start of the second Trump administration has been marked by an unencumbered push of executive authority. Since coming into office, the White House has issued a flurry of executive orders, 171 as of today, already outpacing the number issued during all four years of the previous Biden administration. These orders, along with other actions, under the auspices of government efficiency, have had a cascading effect across the nation, leading to shuttering entire agencies, laying off tens of thousands of federal workers, and thousands of grant candidates. Among them are vital programs that support teacher training, STEM education, and even AmeriCorps service programs, which directly fund emergency response teams on seven of our campuses. One of the most consequential executive orders to higher education came on March 20th, when President Trump directed the Secretary of Education to take all lawful steps to shut down the Department of Education. In the weeks that followed, this included one in San Francisco, and has proposed to shift essential and statutory functions like the federal student aid to other executive agencies and departments, like the Small Business Administration. The U.S. Supreme Court recently lifted a stay that had temporarily blocked these layoffs, effectively greenlining the removal of personnel that ensures the department can fulfill its legal obligations. Unfortunately, the administration's efforts have not been limited to administrative restructuring. They have also wielded funding as a tool to compel policy shifts. Of K-12 and adult education funding, including $928 million for California, only to about The Trump administration has also targeted those states and universities who support undocumented students, issuing an executive order aimed at preventing states from offering in-state tuition to these students. International students have likewise been affected by shifting policy federal priorities. In April, the U.S. State Department abruptly revoked thousands of student visas, causing widespread confusion and distress on campus nationwide. Although most revocations were eventually reversed, the episode deepened feelings of instability and mistrust among both undocumented and international student communities. Additionally, this administration has taken steps to reduce funding and shift priorities at federal research and science agencies. Agencies once lauded for their commitment to peer-reviewed, curiosity-driven research are now under pressure to align with political priorities. This has introduced instability into faculty research, experiential learning, and grant-funded student projects, key pathways to timely graduation and future employment. The administration has proposed capping indirect cost recovery for universities and has eliminated STEM participation programs aimed at underrepresented students, which significantly undermines our social mobility goals. Under a new executive order, the White House has also introduced the concept of gold standard science, leading to growing concerns across the research community that this framework can be used to politicize scientific inquiry and suppress divergent academic perspectives. The federal funding outlook compounds these concerns as well. The president's budget request for fiscal year 2026 proposes cutting the maximum Pell Grant award, eliminating critical student support programs like TRIO and the Federal Supplemental Education Opportunity Grant, or SEOG, and is drastically reducing funding for the federal work study as well as cuts to scientific research agencies. These proposed cuts would do immense harm to our students, many of whom are the first in their families to attend college, come from low-income backgrounds, or face systemic barriers to opportunity. A few changes to national education policy and funding were enshrined into law with a sweeping initiative known as the One Big Beautiful Bill, which narrowly passed Congress through the budget reconciliation process. In response to the House-passed version in May, which proposed deep cuts to Pell Grant eligibility and other critical student aid programs, Chancellor Garcia issued a strong letter urging Congress to protect the Pell Grant program. That letter, co-signed by leaders across California's three higher education segments, as well as private nonprofit institutions in the state, sent a unified message about the vital role that Pell Grants play in advancing college access and student success. We are grateful that Congress listened to Chancellor Garcia. The final legislation excluded the most harmful provisions originally proposed by the House, including cuts to Pell Grant eligibility, the elimination of subsidized student loans, and the introduction of a risk-sharing model that would have placed new barriers on institutions' access to Title IV funding. Additionally, we appreciate that Congress addressed the Pell Grant funding shortfall for FY '26, preserving a lifeline for countless low-income students. Ultimately, the final bill still mandates several significant changes to higher education policy. These include the elimination of a graduate student loan program, an increase in endowment taxes on wealthy private institutions, and a stricter repayment limitations for future borrowers. Perhaps most notably, the bill introduces a new accountability metric based on graduates' future earnings. Cuts to Medicaid and the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, will further complicate state budgets and threaten additional cuts to other state priorities like the CSU. However, the CSU remains committed to working collaboratively with the Department of Education and lawmakers to ensure that these changes are implemented in ways that protect student opportunity and uphold our shared responsibility to educate and uplift California's diverse communities. These changes will need to be made through negotiated rulemaking, which is a complex and often prolonged committee-based process for developing regulations for institutions of higher education, on top of the regulatory process governed by the Administrative Procedure Act. Complicating that path is the reality that the very workforce responsible for that regulatory work has been severely diminished. In the face of this uncertainty, I want to assure you that the CSU will not stand on the sidelines. We are preparing to actively participate in every step of the rulemaking process, raising our voices on behalf of the students, advocating for our mission to provide affordable, high-quality education for every Californian who seeks it. At the same time, the legal landscape is shifting. The Supreme Court recent decision in Trump v. Casa now limits lower court's ability to issue nationwide injunctions, making it far more difficult for institutions and states to quickly challenge problematic executive action. Additionally, a new lawsuit filed by the state of Tennessee, joined by Students for Fair Admission, targets the criteria for institutions to qualify as Hispanic-serving institutions. Although all CSU campuses are HSIs and California has long operated without race-based admissions under Prop 209, this legal challenge threatens to undermine crucial federal resources that support marginalized students. We are not standing still. Guided by the board's federal policy priorities and under the leadership of the chancellor's office, our Office of Federal Relations and Leaders from all CSU campuses have launched a coordinated effort to push back on these policy changes and to advocate for a federal budget that reflects our values and supports our students. We must double down on engagement, advocacy, and storytelling. Now more than ever, we need to mobilize our campus communities, partner with our students, and amplify the incredible work that happens across the CSU every single day. From financial aid and mental health services to STEM research and teacher training, our programs are engines of student success and pathways to upward mobility, but they depend on stable, sustained federal investment. We must tell these stories to members of Congress, to appropriators, to the public. Stories of first-generation students earning their degrees and becoming leaders. Stories of research breakthroughs by CSU faculty. Stories of partnerships with industry and community organizations that prepare graduates for meaningful careers. These narratives are our best defense and are our greatest asset. Even those in Washington will already support the CSU need reminders of the return on investment our universities deliver, not just in numbers, but in human impact. Let's provide them with the data, with personal stories, with community testimonials. Let's make the CSU story impossible to ignore. Together, we can and must advocate, not only in Washington, but right here in California, across our campuses, and every district and community we serve. With that, I yield back to Vice Chancellor Sacks.
Thank you, Assistant Vice Chancellor Cohen. As we've heard today, the evolving federal landscape, it is shifting in real time. In fact, actually, just today, there was something that came out related to DACA students. And it's brought significant challenges. I, again, though, just very, very, very much so want to express my gratitude to all members of the CSU community who are telling those stories, who are connecting with their local legislators and policymakers to make sure they understand the impacts to the CSU. With that, I will conclude our presentation and answer questions. Thank you.
Real things that are going to be, that are impacting us now currently and will be coming. I do love those words, and I'm going to be repeating those words, that we cannot and will not stand still, and we need to continue that story. Do you want to, if there's any comments or questions from? Oh, thank you so much for the information. Chair Clark, this does conclude the business of the committee.
At this time, will the meeting of the Board of Trustees of the California State University please come to or? Ms. Corral, would you please call the roll?
Still here.
Vice Chair Rambeau.
Here.
Trustee Braar.
Here.
Chair Clark.
Present.
Trustee Fajardo.
Present.
Trustee Firstenberg.
Here.
Trustee Fong.
Here.
Chancellor Garcia.
Here.
Trustee Gilarducci.
Here.
Trustee Gilbert Laurie.
Here.
Trustee Wajardo.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Here.
Trustee McGrawry.
Here.
Trustee Najibat.
Governor Newsom.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Here.
Speaker Rebus.
Trustee Steinhauser.
Superintendent Thurmond.
Trustee Vargas.
Trustee Melikar.
Here.
Chair Clark, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, before we consider items on the consent agenda at this time, I would like to continue the board's tradition of inviting our newest trustee to share a few words with us. It's always enriches us to hear firsthand about the experiences and passions that are brought to the CSU. Trustee Carson Fajardo, would you please share a few brief introductory remarks?
Yes, of course.
And welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And hello, Chancellor Garcia, Chair Clark, campus presidents, trustees, student leaders, and members of the public. My name is Carson Fajardo, and I'm incredibly honored to serve as a California State University Student Trustee for the 2025-2027 term. I'm stepping into this role very grateful to serve this amazing system that has given so much to me and my family. I am a proud product of the CSU, born and raised in the Inland Empire and a proud coyote of Cal State San Bernardino, where I now earned my bachelor's degree in administration with a concentration in management and now pursue my master in public administration. My brother is a student of Cal Poly Pomona, pursuing his bachelor's degree in civil engineering. My mother is a graduate of Cal State Fullerton. My family is proud to be made in the CSU. I'm humbled to serve the students' place, place, and remarkable system home. Over the past few years, I've had the privilege of serving two consecutive terms as president and CEO of the Associated Students Incorporated at CSUSB. In that role, I've led a successful student fee referendum that increased our budget by over $1 million annually, secured $350,000 in funding for one of the largest campus events in our university's history, and spearheaded a full rebrand of our logo and visual identity. I also served on the Board of Directors for the California State Student Association, where I worked to uplift student voices at the system-wide level. These roles taught me how to lead through complexity, how to bring people together across differences, and how to think big while still staying grounded in the day-to-day experience of students. And that is the approach I plan to bring to this board. I plan to bring that boots-on-the-ground perspective rooted in the experiences of my peers while also still understanding that the decisions made here don't just affect students. They affect faculty, staff, alumni, and entire communities across the amazing state of California. Whether we're addressing financial challenges, improving campus belonging, or creating real career pathways for students, I look forward to making decisions that honor both the individual experience here. All right, everyone. Test one, test two. So not going to be here that long. I'm just going to, let me see. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. Let me just make sure my mic is working and on, looks like it's working. My board here, but let me just double check. All right, we are good. All right, family. So thanks for joining. As always, appreciate you. This is me in the mass media group. We're going to go through the comments, and then we are going to be out of here. All right, let's see here. Have they done 437? Well, it looks like, and to be honest with you, I really don't follow the CSU trustees' meetings, so this is actually our first time covering it. And I want to give a shout out to Sharice Choir, who actually attended the meeting yesterday. She alerted us and others in the community about this hearing. So I want to give a shout out to Sharice for giving us a heads up. And as you can see, if you guys haven't been following our platform here, she actually did a very wonderful job and expressed herself eloquently, as she did for the American Freedmen community. So shout out to Sharice. Curious Child says, have they done 437? Yes, they briefly talked about it. They actually didn't go over a lot here. Let me, I'm going to share my screen here. Actually, let me see here. See here. So there were quite a few bills that they didn't go over. Here's the agenda. I'm going to pull up the agenda here. All right. So hopefully, everybody can see my screen. So here's, let's see, 437. So as you can see, there were quite a few bills that they were, they actually didn't go over all these bills. But you know what? Let me put this in the chat so everybody has access to this. Hopefully, let me see. So everybody can have access to what I'm looking at. So if you go to that link that's in the chat, if you're on Twitter, then you're going to have to hop over to YouTube because we're streaming both on YouTube and Twitter. So you might not be able to see the PDF link. So you have to get that in the chat on YouTube. But anyway, so let me look up 437. I think it was on the agenda. Let's see here. Yep, here it is. Okay, so as you can see, they had quite a few bills that they could have talked about, but they didn't. So, I mean, to be honest with you, we were even lucky that the trustee even mentioned SB 437. And I just want to give a shout out to Sharice and everybody who was on the call for actually mentioning this. And if you didn't send in your letters to the email, you're going to have to check out the stream from yesterday or go onto the CSU's website to get that email because you can actually put in your comment to the CSU trustees as well. But anyway, this is what was on their agenda, SB 437, Webber Pearson, CSU Claim Eligibility, Genealogy, and Descendancy. I'm just going to read this anyway. This bill appropriates up to $6 million to require the CSU to explore options to determine how to confirm an individual's status as a descendant, a person, a slave, and to establish a process for conducting or verifying. a process for conducting or verifying genealogical research to confirm eligibility for imperative claims. And as was always mentioned by one of the, I don't know if that person was a staffer or trustee, but he did kind of read this over as well. And the one thing that wasn't mentioned, obviously, or wasn't questioned or challenged, which, you know, I'm surprised none of the black trustees didn't mention anything, or regardless of black or not, didn't, nobody mentioned it, even though SB 437 was mentioned. But what was not mentioned is that the CSU does not have a genealogy study program at all. So there you go, family. All right, let me go ahead and go through these comments and wrap it up. As always, thanks, everybody. Please like, share, and subscribe. We greatly appreciate that. All right, let me go back here. All right. Have they done 437? So hopefully, that did answer your question, Curious Child. What is a purple crown to see the number 50 next to it? Uh, I believe if you are a member of the channel, you get a crown? Or maybe there's something on YouTube that I'm not aware of now, but I believe for our members, they get a little crown. Shout out to Audra. What up, Audra? Audra, also, from my understanding, if I recall correctly, had a chance to give her a public comment over the phone, so shout out to our good sister out there, Audra, putting in the work. Shout out to Mrs. Wade. Thank you very much for joining. Appreciate you. And as always, appreciate the love. Appreciate that super chat. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Every little bit, every little penny. What is that, Abraham Lincoln still on that bill? The one who supposedly helped free the emancipated persons? Supposedly. Yeah, so once again, nobody said anything about the CSU not having a genealogy department, What up, double R in the building? What's up, brother? Hope you're doing all right, fam. All right, cool. Good, good, good. Yeah. Go, if Curious Child, if you can, go to our YouTube page from yesterday, and you will see the community actually speaking up regarding SB 437, so you can definitely. Oh, I said that in my statement yesterday. This is theft. It is. I mean, they're literally transferring reparations over to CSU. It's sabotage, it's theft, and it's all that. You were one of them. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. All right, family, so we are going to wrap it up here, because as usual, people will be multitasking, and that's what I'm doing right now. So everybody have a wonderful day, and let's see, what do we have? Oh, man, let me see if I could put this up. We got Chris coming up. Let me get this up real quick. We got Chris coming up this Thursday, and it's going to be a fire conversation. Let me see if I can get this up real quick, family. Thursday at, what time? 6:00 PM. Yep. So we got Chris. Man, this is going to be a fire. Fam, we going in, like, we going in. Chris is definitely going to be on, but we're going to have a great conversation this time, because this is going to be no, what's it, no-holds-bar, I think that's what they call it, conversation? Let me take this comment down. Yeah. So definitely join us, participate in this conversation, because we're definitely going to have a candid conversation with our good brother, Chris Lozson, who's one of the leading organizers, volunteers for the Coalition for Just In Equitable California, the number one and leading advocacy group for lineage-based reparations. All right. Absolutely. All right, family, you guys have a great one, and be on the lookout. We are currently working on, ladies and gentlemen, yes, reparations now, part two, the betrayal. It's just interesting, especially when you guys watch this trailer, like, the things that are happening right now in real time. It really is a betrayal. It really is a betrayal, so be on the lookout for that. We're coming out 2026. We have some great interviews with the community and advocates that have been on the ground floor with this, and we greatly appreciate everybody's participation in this reparations fight that we have. All right, we are out. Y'all have a great one, and we will see you next time. We'll see you on Thursday, 6:00 PM, with our good brother, Chris. That's PST, Pacific Standard Time, right here on Men the Media Mass Group, your number one source for reparations and news, and we are out as always, peace and lineage-based reparations.
Please move item 7172 to the enacted file.
I just wanted to know, what did you know about bills not being brought to Florida? Two clinical reparations bills, Senate Bill 1403 and Senate Bill 1331.
Because there's over 1,000. I'm not very good at the numeric, but.
That, you know, it's going to, the analysis that it's only a couple million dollars to stand it up.
Peanuts.
And his response was, we want to do it in a different way. We don't want to do it through creating a whole new bureau. We want to do it through the UC system.
So this is Assemblyman Mr. Bryan. He's mad I brought up the reparations vote, so he's preventing me from speaking, and he's trying to block my access here.
Madam Speaker, I ask that we take up file item 71 SB 1331.
If you decide to start your family tree even without the DNA, eight or nine times out of 10, you're going to find your family.
A great number of African-Americans can trace their lineage to the period of enslavement.
Lamert was developed by Walter H. Lamert, and in his designing this area, he actually had covenants to where they would not sell to black people.
We should, we should have a bill.
I supported the bill all session. Bring the bill.
Will you vote?
CLBC, can you give them a grade one to 10?
Oh, this current process as of now is a negative.
Vote for the bill, Mr. Senator. Will you vote for the bill?
Bring it up.
Will you vote for reparations?
Bring it up.
I would love it.
Bring it up.
Let's vote for reparations together.
It's a spirit of anti-blackness, and we must call it out. And so I'm going to call out on August 31st, 2024, that the California Legislature Black Caucus, the majority of them, and the governor allowed the enemy to use them to try to keep us down and keep us as bottom-class citizens.
Just think that all the other members have at least about 10 years left, so we're not going anywhere.
I've heard it's slightly changed, and some of the advocates who were part of the coalition last go around are now expressing concerns of whether or not they're still able to stand behind it if those changes are not corrected.
In so many years, it will hardly be no black folks left in California. We love y'all, we thank y'all, and we demanding reparations right now.
First of all, America, from the evidence that they gave us, you're guilty.
What happened on August 31st, 2024 was a betrayal.
We know that if we don't have our hand in this process as much as we possibly can, it can't be corrupted from the outside. So in terms of our role, our role isn't done until they are issuing the checks for our reparations.
The time for reparations is now.
Yeah. Right now. What do we want? 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 No. What do we want? No. That's it.